Too big to eat out?
Okay.
Yeah, I just love it.
Hey, Jim.
Okay.
Good, how about you?
Yeah. Can we have a quick share? Okay, I'll find that.
Yeah.
It's gonna be close. Yeah, if you had to put it in the app.
No.
Okay.
Who are you calling up?
So glad you think they'll beat Southern Cal?
So glad, you think they'll beat Southern Cal? Southern Cal is good. Boy, boy. Hey, Mr. Man. Yeah, they got, their quarterback's supposed to be the number one NFL choice.
So we just felt very respectable.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm good. How are you?
Good, good. Couple of new students were called.
Yeah.
Who'll be on?
August 28, 2017. Vice Mayor Cooney?
President.
Mayor Hopewell?
President. And we have a motion to excuse Commissioner Urban. And Commissioner Sykes, supported by Commissioner Mizzarri. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Communications manager.
Uh, nothing this evening.
Discussion topic: Draft Master Plan and Rebuilt Environment. Commissioner.
Yeah, well, we're gonna jump right into a presentation by Community Planning and Development Director Rebecca Kick and City Planner Christina Anderson. So I'm gonna turn it over to them and walk you through the Draft Master Plan and the Built Environment.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. So tonight is stemming from one of the conversations that we had earlier in the year where we said we wanted to talk about the built environment. Specifically, we wanted to talk deeply about urban design, about how transportation, land use, the zoning code were all setting us up for success, driving us closer to the vision that Imagine CalMazoo was setting us up for. So we really see this as a foundational meeting for the conversation in September as well, when we're talking about economic development and affordable housing. Because this conversation that we're gonna have tonight is really going to be able to show you what kind of barriers might be in our way and what kind of zoning changes we have identified that are critical to the conversation we're gonna have in September, and to talk more about how land use in our streets both can really work for our community as far as place-making goes, making a more comfortable and safe place for our residents, or how that's hindering and not creating connectivity between our neighborhoods, to our downtown, from neighborhood to neighborhood. So we really hope to have a rich discussion tonight about how all of those pieces are kind of happening. So the way that we're gonna frame the conversation is, we're gonna tell you the challenges that we heard through Imagine CalMazoo, and then we're gonna give you the other side. What is the master plan doing to respond to the challenges that we've heard? So I'm gonna turn it over to Christina Anderson, City Planner, to help us walk through the conversation.
Okay. So we had three design outcomes from this conversation this evening. The first is a shared understanding of the current mission for CalMazoo. So how do we align our development processes, processes to make sure that we're achieving our master plan goals? And the second part of that is, how do we align place-making, land use, transportation, and the zoning ordinance, again, to achieve what we have stated as our vision? The second outcome is how to use best practices to update our zoning ordinance, which would be the step, the likely step after we have our master plan approved. So how do we make sure that the zoning code reflects the vision and helps us achieve that? And how do we use some of those best practices, like form-based zoning, like stress tests to understand what our zoning code can do and what it's not doing for us today? And I'll get into those details about what those are in a few minutes. The third outcome is a shared understanding of current efforts to update the master plan and how it involves our boards, our commissions, and our departments. I think we all know that the master plan provides a clear set of instructions and work plans for the city departments, but how is the master plan used in our volunteer boards that impact a wide variety of topics within the city? And how does that also relate to our redevelopment-readies, community certification that we've been going for from the state? Our agenda tonight, so what we'll be doing is going over the identified challenges to the built environment, specifically land use and zoning and transportation challenges, and again, how are we managing them in the master plan? We'll then follow up with a discussion on redevelopment-ready communities and how the decision-making will work with, will happen after the master plan is approved. So the first built environment challenge we're gonna focus on tonight is land use and zoning. And I have a list on the left of some of the challenges that we heard through Imagine CalMazoo, but also through CPND's work with Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals. So the first challenge is that we have an abundance of commercial and industrial zoning in our corridors, and that we've had a variety of requests for rezoning cases, and we found, you know, issues in the, in the, in the ordinance where we've needed to make some changes proactively. So the way that we will handle that is by adjusting the future land development plan. The future, and you'll hear me refer to this a couple times tonight, in the master plan there's usually a future land use plan. In this update of the master plan, we're referring to it as the future land development plan, because it goes beyond just land uses to also consider transportation. It's kind of a principal tenet for us in this master plan is that transportation and land use are the two keys of the built environment, and they have to work together in order for us to achieve the vision that the community put forward. So when I say future land development plan, think of it as kind of land use plan plus. So the second challenge in the built environment related to land use and zoning that we heard was getting a lot of variance requests, lot sizes, placement on lots, down to, you know, also what types of housing, you know, the community desires, and, you know, that aren't necessarily permitted by right within our zoning ordinance. So the way that the master plan addresses this is by thinking of zoning as a strength and not as a barrier to how we move forward, whether our forward progression is growth in an area or just preservation of existing character. We need to make sure that the zoning code allows either. So master plan looks at this zoning as a strength, and then looks at very specific zoning code and map updates. Desire for walkable urban development we heard throughout Imagine CalMazoo, particularly in our neighborhood meetings. How do we achieve that? The master plan looks at some innovative zoning principles that can be used, including form-based zoning. The master plan also talks about neighborhood and commercial nodes and our corridors, and how we focus our growth and to achieve those walkable urban areas in key places throughout the city, which is kind of tied to the next one, which is a desire to meet daily needs. Not just goods and services needs, I need that quart of milk, I need the light bulb, and I'd like to be able to do it in a way that's more efficient or easier, but also that community and social needs that we have as, as humans and residents of a community. And so the master plan addresses this challenge through a complete neighborhood policy and also neighbor, recommending neighborhood plans across the city. So what I'm gonna do right now is, I'm gonna take each one of these and go into detail about how the master plan is handling it. Feel free to stop me at any point to ask questions. Nope, this is not the updated one. Okay, so.
Excuse me, ma'am. Commissioners, as you have questions, just, they want acknowledge and deal with the organization of the meeting, I don't need to do that, so as you get questions, just say.
Okay, great. Okay. I apologize, this map, we updated this map after the cabinet meeting this morning, and so this is not the right map, but we can still have a discussion. So the challenge was an abundance of commercial and industrial development, or designation throughout the city, both in the zoning code and in the 2010 master plan, land use plan. How we have handled it in the master plan, and what you see to the right is, on that slide, is the, is the current draft master plan's future land development plan. So in thinking about that there's not only an abundance of commercial industrial in terms of quantity, we also have issues in terms of where it's located, and it's located in some sensitive areas that perhaps it no longer, that it no longer is where it should be located. Laura is handing out a copy of the PowerPoint too, so you can have it directly in front of you. So the way the master, the draft master plan is handling this challenge is by focusing the commercial development, or focusing commercial within nodes around the city as a way to kind of concentrate that walkable urban development that we heard was desired. Also in the master plan, have looked at how we can take areas and think about industrial, excuse me, how we can think about industrial development a little bit differently. So industrial development, in many cases today, is not the, the noxious, a lot of negative, you know, externalities development. A lot of industrial today is maker spaces and a smaller scale, and how do we incorporate that into our community in a, in a different way? And so the master plan suggests that we have, we create two new classifications in our land use map, neighborhood edge and urban edge, and these are meant to be more flexible, allow the maker spaces, and if the maker space happens to be, if, you know, if a mixed, if a scooter shop comes in with a coffee shop and it happens to be next to residential, that's okay. Those two things are compatible, even though there's some construction of an item or putting together of an item going on in one space. It doesn't have to necessarily be classified as strictly industrial, put out in an industrial area. We can welcome those in, into different parts of our community. Thank you. And then, talking about, the master plan focuses on quality over quantity, and this is where we talk about designating commercial nodes. On this map on the right, you'll see that there are some circles, and it's a little easier to see on the paper copy that you have here. In these spots where, where a node is generally an intersection, although not exclusively, where we are looking to concentrate walkable mixed-use development. And again, that's where we're looking at the quality of them versus the quantity of them. What do we have there? Are the streets designed accordingly to foster that walkable development? Is traffic calmed in those locations? How do we handle it? So zoning as a strength. So typically after our master plan, again, master plan sets the vision, and a zoning ordinance is what helps to implement that vision. Our zoning ordinance from 2005 is, is ripe for some amount of changes after two master plan iterations, but that's a big project, and it is, you know, will take some amount of time to do a complete overhaul of the zoning code. So what can we, the master plan talks about what can we do, what specifically do we need to include in an update? And also reflects things that we've already started to do to think about that update. So those things are, we've been working with the redevelopment-ready communities through technical assistance to get an understanding from our small developers and our business community of what some of the obstacles are in our development processes, processes as they exist today. We are working with Lean Six Sigma to use that lens on our site development, or site plan review process, to make sure that we are creating a streamlined process that makes sense for both the, the client as well as the city. The master plan goes through a pretty specific list of things that should be considered in the next update, and those are listed on this slide. So how do we make sure that the zoning ordinance reflects the existing context of CalMazoo? And, you know, we heard through Imagine CalMazoo that there were locations where, that exist in the city where the zoning code does not, does not match with what's on the ground today. For example, in some of our residential neighborhoods, specifically in Edison, the zoning district that is over that area is, has a different minimum lot width than what exists in the community, and how do you reconcile those things? So it's not a barrier to updating those properties. In places where more, you know, more detail needs to be gone through as to what the exact vision for that area is, that master plan talks about neighborhood plans. And how do we, if the master plan is kind of that 5,000 above, looking down at the city, looking at all the issues, a neighborhood plan is on the ground and can help specifically tailor what zoning changes would need to be made to an area to achieve their specific vision.
And this is something that we're looking at very specifically to adapt into the master plan. So right now, while the master plan is looking at that future land development map that does not replace the zoning that is in effect right now in 2005, instead, what we would do is you would go neighborhood by neighborhood. While you create that plan, you are also creating that context-sensitive zoning as you go, because there is no one-size-fits-all zoning, and that's where the form-based zoning really takes into account for the character and the context. And it does take a long time, because it is a very block-by-block review of what happens, but that's why we feel that adapting those neighborhood plans into the master plan then allows that neighborhood the flexibility that they truly need in order to, Christina alluded to, you know, transform or protect the way they, right. Go ahead.
Okay, just, I do have a series of questions I'll just ask, just a few of them right now. Just, just to help me kind of get my mind wrapped around a little bit. I mean, in a nutshell, what are you trying to say by zoning as a strength? I mean, I'm not quite grasping.
Sure.
What you mean by that idea.
So we have heard, again, throughout Imagine CalMazoo and from some of our conversations with developers in the area, development community, that there are, that the zoning doesn't always match the city's vision for the area, which, so that would, if we want to meet the vision for that area, that would require a series of steps to either rezonate property or get a variance.
It's a barrier.
Yeah, it's, it just, it acts as an obstacle.
Okay.
So we're trying to create zoning not to be a barrier, but to actually strengthen neighborhoods, to actually be a tool that helps people realize the vision, and therefore is, wow, we have a great zoning, and now we have a great community because of our zoning. It's kind of taking it back, I guess is the best way to say it, because right now zoning feels like a burden. It feels like it's, it's making things difficult.
It's setting them up for success, so it's a tool to achieve the vision as opposed to something to kind of stumble over as you get there.
So that's kind of what we're looking for in these immediate fixes before we take on the arduous task of going through an entire code rewrite. We are working with the Michigan Municipal League and the MEDC to do what we're calling a stress test. We're saying, here's our community's vision, here's what Imagine CalMazoo is saying. Now, take our 2005 zoning code and tell us what can we do tomorrow, and bring to the commission to say, we can get just one more step closer, we can take down one more piece of red tape. So it might be a setback, it might be a lot size, it might be opening up our use table and simplifying it in some way, so that we're looking at some quick-hit amendments in order to help us get a little closer to the vision without a complete rewrite.
So we're in the process, we're not understanding what all of these issues are.
What that would be.
The stress test is another step, like talking to the development community and small businesses, like talking to the neighborhoods through Imagine CalMazoo to understand what folks have, you know, tried to do.
What they wanted to do.
Right. So we pick a few lots, we pick some blocks in Edison, we pick some blocks on the north side, we pick some blocks on the east side, and over on the west side of town, and we say, okay, let's try and develop a single-family home that looks just like the one next door. Let's try and develop a shop that looks like the one across the street. Can we do it with the zoning that we currently have? Great, check, check, check. We can't do it? All right, let's see. What would we need to do in order to get that single-family home put back on that demolished lot? What would we need to do to get mixed-use building on this corner of this node? It's, and then helping us again, get those, just those quick amendments, so that we can bring those in front of you and be able to say, hey, here's what we've got, like existing world as it is, and then show you world as it could be if we just do a few tweaks.
So just to follow up on that, why is the rewrite of the zoning such an arduous process?
So you've just been through 18 months of Imagine CalMazoo.
Yeah.
So imagine going through the exact same process with a zoning ordinance, because it would, it's too personal.
To do something that is right for CalMazoo, context-based, meets our vision, it does require that level of engagement again. And there are, you know, a lot of, if we're looking at form-based code in certain places, so that's looking at the form as well as the use, and.
So talk about that just a little bit.
Sure, so a form-based code prioritizes, I mean, the basic definition is that it's a code that looks at form before it looks like, before it looks at use. So you have a building, and what is the most, or you have a lot and it's redeveloped, you know, what are the most important characteristics? Is it that it's a coffee shop, or a hair salon, or is it, you know, where it's located on the lot? Is it, you know, where's the entrance? If we're looking at a, if we're considering a lot within one of our walkable urban areas, where that building is on the lot makes a big difference on how it's accessed. So making sure that it's built up to the front of the property line, making sure that there's an entrance on the front, you'd think that that was, you know, kind of a no-brainer, but that's not necessarily the case. Making sure that there's a minimum amount of windows or transparency on the front, so when people are walking by, they can see in, and there's a level, oh, I wanna go in that shop. You know, create interest and desire for people to walk down the block. It doesn't not regulate form, but it says, you know, we can be a little more simplistic on how we look at uses, and not necessarily split hairs with everything, because what's most important is that building and its relationship to the street, and that building's relationship to the adjacent buildings, and how they all work together to create that active area that we heard the community wanted throughout the city. So it's just another type of, it's just another zoning tool that we can use. And in order to do it thoughtfully and correctly, you know, there's a certain amount of study that needs to be done on the ground to make sure that the, what's being put in is, is appropriate.
And that goes to the preservation of neighborhoods as well. So when you think about a street in Edison, or on the east side, or on the north side, where you've had some houses demolished, and you want to infill a new house in, then you take into account, hey, where are all the porches? Let's make sure all the porches line up. Or how tall are the houses? Let's make sure they're similar heights. So it kind of, it keeps the character of the place that you're in as well. And so that way, if it's, whether it's infill into the Vine Business District or infill into the Edison Business District, that, again, you're looking at what's there, and you're not just chucking that out. You know, the character of these places needs to be taken into account, and form-based rather than use-based. You know, a grocery store coming in and telling us, well, this is how we design grocery stores. Okay, well, maybe not here. Maybe here, you do it a little bit differently. And I think that that's up to the community to tell us what that little bit differently looks like in their neighborhood.
I'm trying not to belabor this, but there's a couple other quick things. So is it the case that maybe around the country, that there's a movement that's occurring from a use-based zoning to a form-based zoning? And are there good examples? So is there a possibility that we could look for, and I'm sure there are, places where it's worked, and so we wouldn't have to be reinventing the wheel here when it comes to that.
Nope.
And then, it seems to me, you know, like we went through this whole process about extending some design standards, you know, south for ways, that seemed like a zoning change to me. I guess, I don't know if it was or it wasn't, I mean, and I know that it was hard enough in a way, but it, is that another way to do what we're talking about, or is that a separate thing?
Sure, that, design guidelines are actually something separate. So when it's in the zoning, they may discuss the same detail, but when it's in the zoning code, it's the zoning regulations, and it is required, just like your setback would be required, or your height would be required, and if you wanted to differ from that, you would need to go before the zoning board for a variance. Design guidelines don't necessarily have that same amount of teeth behind them. I mean, you can write them in different ways to, you know, try to require them, but they're design guidelines, not zoning ordinance.
Yeah. So it kind of, it takes the really good things that can happen in design guidelines if you're going after a very specific context and character, because that's usually when you use a design guideline. Like in the downtown, we have a zoning ordinance, and we have a design guideline. You put those two things together, and you are getting very close to a form-based code.
And I, I, form-based zoning is just another tool. You know, it's not something that we necessarily would use blanket over the whole city. You know, it's a specific tool that can be very useful to achieve either a preservation of character, or, you know, to implement the vision, and we can use it however the community, however we decide to use it. Does that help? I think Rebecca probably touched on just about all of these things. Making sure that we have, we're offering housing opportunities that meet all of our community's needs, and making sure that the zoning code reflects that. Incorporating green, green technique, green zoning techniques into the, into our ordinance, stormwater, you know, perhaps how, you know, another look at how we manage wind or solar within our code, and again, making sure that the code is searchable online. This is something that applies to our redevelopment-ready communities. Now, it's technically searchable online, it's a PDF, so you can search it, but it's not searchable, it's, it's not searchable in the way that, you know, you have keywords or specific illustrations, the way that if a community has updated a code in the recent past, you know, new, new internet housings allow you to search them. Also, the zoning code does not match the same numbering system as our code of ordinances. It's an appendix, but it has its own chapters, it's just a little bit, it just was done a little bit differently, so we can better manage those things. So we heard that there is a desire for walkable urban development, and specifically along corridors and, you know, concentrating it into nodes, and the, the master plan looks at this through a couple of lenses. So first, and I talked about the, at the beginning, when I talked about the future land development plan versus the future land use plan, is that, you know, we, the master plan looks at the built environment as two, two pieces that are together, land use and transportation. And you can't do something to one without impacting the other. And if the vision along our.
as two pieces that are together, land use and transportation. And you can't do something to one without impacting the other. And if the vision along our nodes is for them to be mixed use and walkable, then we need to make sure that in those areas, the streets are calmed, provide access, safe access for all modes of transportation in a way that match with, you know, the perhaps, you know, smaller scale, urban scale development in those locations. And together, if those pieces are working together, you know, we will be able to create the walkable nodes that were desired, the place that people had envisioned when they talked to us through Imagine CalMazoo. I touched on this a bit and you can see it in the illustration in the upper right. There, the master plan discusses two types of nodes or concentrations of this mixed use walkable development, two different scales. One, with the example that we have here is at Vine and Westnedge, a neighborhood node which is meant to serve, you know, generally serve the immediate neighborhood. It's smaller, the uses are developed at a smaller scale. And then down at Crosstown Parkway and Westnedge, where the new grocery store is going to be going in, you know, that can still be walkable and urban, but it's just done on a larger scale. The uses relate to more than just the adjacent neighborhood, but serve multiple neighborhoods. And so there are these standards to manage both types. Again, this is where that form comes into play. Because this is not the ordinary commercial development that might happen on Stadium or out on the west side of town. It needs to be done, you know, perhaps in a more thoughtful way in order for it to be walkable and meet the community's vision. So this is a place where form is very important. And a lot of this, if we set these nodes and, you know, we work with the community to, you know, help achieve this goal, we need to make sure that we're setting them up correctly. The businesses up correctly. We want to make sure that they succeed. And so creating a walkable node, but not having all the right standards in place could mean that, you know, we're setting them up for failure.
I'm sure you guys have seen, you know, it's kind of like when you're in the middle of the Westnedge corridor and you're, you've got eight lanes of traffic, yet you see a sidewalk, you see street trees, you see, you know, the push buttons that somebody actually has got 26 seconds to try and walk across Westnedge. That's probably the intersection of the two worst parts of the world, right? Is trying to say that you're walkable because you have the sidewalk on an eight lane road is not really setting people up for success. And it also would be disingenuous of us trying to even pretend that that is walkable. So if we're going to have people put their buildings on the street and be on the sidewalk, then the street will correspond and be traffic calmed and have multimodal traffic. If we can't have a street that looks like that, we aren't going to demand the form that creates a walkable place in that particular area. So again, it's setting the expectation of walkable urban and the street matches and it always will go together.
So looking at the second focus out of built environment challenges, and those are transportation. So one, the first challenge that we heard, the streets don't always correspond to the surrounding area. What Rebecca, you know, the example Rebecca just talked about. Master plan looks at that and says, okay, we're going to create a framework of streets. And that framework is going to consider both land use as well as transportation. When we look at streets, we're looking at all pieces. We heard that we have an incomplete non-motorized network. There are gaps in our sidewalk system. We have bike routes that may not take folks to every location that is of interest. How do we fill in, how do we fill in those gaps? We look at, we use our complete streets policy. We have updated our non-motorized plan. And we look at all the different actions that help us achieve the strategic vision goal of connected city. We heard throughout Imagine CalMazoo, a lot of, you know, there's this concern that places in CalMazoo, you know, people drive through them rather than to them. And so how do we get people to stop and be in a place? How do we take advantage of the spaces that we have? This goes back to, again, another strategic vision goal of inviting public places. You know, how do we capitalize on the public spaces that we have now? And always, again, traffic calming, making sure that the street matches with what we're looking for. Finally, issues with navigation and, you know, fast traffic. And the biggest, you know, project that came out of that is, you know, considering converting the streets to two-way. So the first challenge, streets don't respond to the surrounding area. The way the master plan handles this is by, again, creating that framework of streets. And it's looking at land use and transportation together. You'll see this, the map that is before you right now is the future land development map, but with the land uses grayed out. So the streets really come forward, so you can see. There are four colors on this map. And we have, in the master plan, have designated four street types for how in the future we would like to see streets improved. An example of that is the Priority Street that is right below that. That corresponds with the red lines on the map. CalMazoo Mall, West Michigan and the first block of Porridge. And a Priority Street, just for, we have this one in front of you, looks at giving priority to pedestrians. Again, it occurs in our most walkable retail areas. And so we want to make sure that if we have that land use there, that we're giving them priority in the street, making sure the sidewalks are sufficiently wide enough. Making sure that we have bicycle lanes or the appropriate bicycle facilities on street parking transit and that we're handling all of those as well as the vehicles. Again, this all goes back to connected city. Connected city and strategic vision. In the master plan, we're making sure that connected city goes beyond the streets and the intersections and the sidewalks to take into account the land use, architecture of the building and the public spaces that exist within our right of way.
Can you tell us what the other colors stand for?
Sure, I'm sorry. So the red streets are priority streets. Again, pedestrian is kind of getting the highest priority in that. The orange streets, which exist, and, oh, those are not great. They blend a little bit on the screen. The orange streets, which exist only in the downtown, are our main streets. Yeah. So that's the next level down for priority. You know, we still want to be very sensitive of driveway access on these streets. We recognize that these are still pretty key pedestrian and bicycle movement streets for us on street facilities for bicyclists. The yellow streets are connectors. And so, you know, we're moving, kind of moving in a hierarchy here. So connectors are definitely streets that are going to move traffic in and through our city that doesn't mean that there aren't going to be pedestrian facilities. Perhaps the bike lanes are protected bike lanes in certain situations. You know, it's everything, it's like each one, each one of these provides like a kit, each street kind of has a kit of parts, right? And you use them, you know, and you handle each mode based on, you know, how they relate to the others. So connected streets, or connector streets also are going to have transit components. Yes, certainly.
As you described, the priority streets, you said the mall. Could you give us actual CalMazoo examples of these streets?
Of course. So, of course. So the main streets include Rose Street, South and Level.
Ransom. Several of the streets that connect Ransom to the downtown.
Church.
Yeah, Church Street and Harrison Street, Pitcher Street. Pitcher Street that comes all the way down to Michigan.
And then the connector streets include CalMazoo Avenue. It includes Michigan Avenue on the, on the west side of Westnedge, Patterson, Oakland, White's Parkview are connector streets. And then the fourth type is a boulevard. So in that scenario, you know, those are definitely streets that are going to move a lot of traffic. Again, pedestrian and bicyclists still handled, but perhaps they're handled on a shared use path outside of the, you know, the curb to curb space. And these are streets like Stadium, Kings Highway. And Westnedge is a boulevard, although because of where Westnedge goes through town, there's definitely going to be sidewalk on both sides of the street. So that must be a little bit different. And in, you know, I apologize, in the master plan, the maps are a little bit bigger and each map lists the streets that we've designated as well as having, you know, a larger scale map that's a little bit easier to read than what's on the screen in front of you. So the second challenge for transportation was an incomplete non-motorized transportation network. So the master plan includes an updated non-motorized plan with additional bicycle facilities. We are looking at, we asked folks through Imagine CalMazoo, what were their destinations? And this was how we started to think about how we prioritize where we're making our improvements. And we heard schools, we heard parks, we heard commercial nodes were a lot of the top destinations for folks within our neighborhoods. And we started to look, and it's illustrated in the bottom right here on this illustration up on the screen, that those circles represent about a five minute walk from a site. And that creating that five minute walk radius, quarter mile around our sites helps us to create priority areas for what sidewalks get improved, what sidewalks, when gaps need to be, when gaps can be completed. The complete streets policy also guides all the evaluation of the new streets. And so the master plan refers to this document. We also want to make sure that we're being very thoughtful on our street lighting and our street trees and how those two elements work in concert together and don't work against each other. You know, we heard issues with street trees blocking lights, but, you know, there's a desire for street trees, some desire for additional lighting. And how do we manage those two elements? Both coming together, right? Do we need to look at different types of lighting? Do we need to plant trees a little bit differently?
We talked about pedestrian scale lighting a lot. Because with the overhead overall street lighting, that's where the trees are really kind of getting in the way and kind of keeping the areas dark. Plus, I know in some parts of the neighborhood where there will only be one street light per intersection. And the evaluation of what kind of development is there? Are kids getting on the bus there? How can we bring the lighting down pedestrian scale? And we got some good feedback from K D P S really liking that idea as well as neighborhood leaders' desires of having better pedestrian lighting, especially for the kids when they're getting on a bus. Right now, it's quite dark in the morning.
So the challenge of getting through rather than to. And this ties back to using our, using all of our spaces as effectively as possible. About 25% of the city is covered with our right of way, our streets. So how do we take advantage of those spaces? I think that when people talk about public places, parks tend to come to folks' minds as places to gather and be. And what the master plan talks about is, yes, those are lovely places, but there are other spaces that we can use and use to the city's advantage. And that is within our right of way. That's activating our pedestrian, our pedestrian facilities, our sidewalks, especially in our downtown and in those, around those nodes that we discussed. And so, you know, activating those areas will not only create places for folks to gather and create more foot traffic in an area. It's beneficial to the adjacent businesses because more people are there. They go in and out and they're seeing what's, you know, those existing uses and can, you know, lead to have a positive impact on economic development in that area. The master plan, you know, kind of talks at length about, you know, creating these spaces and how they can be used. How do we incorporate events into those spaces? How do we use public arguments in these places to create places that are memorable and that people want to visit? And, you know, at our downtown public meeting, we had big pictures and talked about this at length with the participants. It's how do we take raw spaces like the viaduct in the upper right and, you know, activate them to make them interesting and places to be and places to pass by? Whether we're advertising, you know, crosswalks to be, you know, kind of nondescript locations, but it's there an opportunity for us to take advantage of, to tie something back that's happening in the community. You know, I think that we are pretty good with doing events in these public spaces. You know, bottom left, we have Parking Day with the emphasis on the park part of it, where we used parking spaces. We took some parking spaces to, you know, be more active for that afternoon. We closed down streets. A picture on the right, kids doing hula hoops and music. And, you know, we're really good at those things. How do we do more of that? And how do we take the everyday spaces and use them to our advantage? There's the illustration on the left of Corporation Alley that runs between the CalMazoo Mall headed west to Rose Street. You know, how do we take that space and make it into something where, you know, people gather, commerce happens? And I believe that there's work going on right now to plan, you know, do something very similar to that picture.
So I think that, I mean, we're just trying to think through, we've got 25% of our land use is our public right of way, our streets. And I think that it's up to us to decide how we want to make the best use of those streets. And I think that's exactly how we titled it in the master plan, is smarter streets. And when we, you know, smarter use of our streets is how do we make those sidewalks a better transportation network and a social network? And how is that connectivity really fostering that connectivity in our neighborhoods and in between our neighborhoods? You know, there are so many times that we saw on a map during a neighborhood meeting that they're like, man, if I could just get over there, you know, from the east side to the north side, like, where does that bike lane go? Like, where does the side mark network go? Like, there's just, it's just not there. And you've got the intersection of Gold Road and River View Drive and you just give up, you know? So it's really thoughtful design and some cool interventions. Like Christina said, why aren't we doing some of this stuff? You know, in really meaningful ways. But how are we spreading the love? How is that happening throughout the community? And just letting it happen by designing our streets a little differently and just stop thinking about, you know, how you get home a car, you know, it's perspective down the street. But how are you getting there as a pedestrian?
So better navigation and traffic calming. We talked earlier that the number one project that came up over and over again is the two-way street conversion. The city has, there are still three pairs of one-way streets in and around the downtown that are left after what has been slowly converted back to two-way. We understand, the master plan understands that that's not something that we can, you know, snap our fingers and happen. But it's going to take concerted effort with our partners at the state, with our local transportation partners. And how do we go about doing that as thoughtfully as possible? You know, if we have to make choices, how do we set the right priorities for those choices? And if there is a conversion, what should those look like after that happens? Because everything, you know, these streets are part of a network. So anything we do to one is going to impact everything else. And so it's looking at, you know, not just improving navigation on those streets, but improving navigation throughout the downtown or throughout the entire city. The master plan calls for updating our wayfinding signage. Wayfinding was last updated in 1999 and it is great. But it may not, at this point, reflect exactly what's going on in CalMazoo. We've had all sorts of development on the east side of town, you know, that could be played up within our wayfinding signs. You know, new bike routes, new bus routes, everything that, you know, has happened since then that's not reflected. We also need to do better wayfinding throughout the greater community, not just downtown. You know, how do you get from a neighborhood to downtown or from a neighborhood to one of the universities or from, you know, university out? And so again, it's kind of taking a step back and say, we've had a lot go on in the last 17 years. You know, so what do we, what do we need to consider now? How do we need to update it? And how are people moving through the city maybe in a little bit differently than they used to? And again, I think Rebecca already touched on this a little bit. We, you know, connectivity between our neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods are unique and each has a lot of assets, different assets. And so how do we foster that flow between them in different ways? And so how do we foster that flow between them in different ways? So redevelopment community certification, this is something that's been going on for several years. And, you know, we are nearing the end of this certification process. There are just two pieces that are missing on our application, a citywide marketing plan and the public participation plan. Redevelopment Ready Community, the purpose of this, you know, this certification is for the state to kind of review our processes, review our practices and say, you know, Kalamazoo, you know, you have, you know, done your due diligence, you have streamlined your processes, you've thought about everything, you know, we're going to stamp you as ready. And, you know, in our marketing materials, we're going to include Kalamazoo as Redevelopment Ready Community, you know? And so it's a great tool for us to be advertised in that way. So last two pieces again are in the works right now. They will be going to the Planning Commission for review on September 7th and then to the City Commission thereafter for you guys to take a look at. Again, the two pieces are our marketing plan, which is, you know, how the city plans to improve its marketing and to the processes it will use to market itself. And the public participation plan, which lays out, you know, our standards for how different scales of projects need to incorporate engagement. And, you know, coming off Imagine Kalamazoo, we have lots to say in that department. So, yes, please.
Before we start working through all this, just a few other things, just to kind of pull more connect, well, actually not this portion of it, but just a kind of general question. So, you know, we just got this document that was, that was from the work that SPK did, that, you know, was talking about concerns and responses to those concerns in a whole variety of areas. How does that work interact with, you know, work you're doing and the master plan and all that kind of business? How is that getting cooked into the whole deal?
We gave them everything to start with. So we said during Imagine Kalamazoo, in the piles and piles of data that we had from surveys or emails or from conversations, a sticky note that mentioned, you know, failing support services, we gave the SPK team that entire stack and said, here you go, here are questions. You don't have to ask the community. Here's what's offered up on your plate right now. And now you can dive into these ideas that have already been given to you and ask deeper questions.
Okay. So we've all started from the same, the same starting plan.
But then the answers in their world?
Now they're taking it and they're going deeper.
And how does that channel back to the greater planning and your planning? How does that feed back in then?
Sure, through the strategic vision, because shared prosperity is something that we're all trying to touch, getting that deeper understanding through the plan is going to help us do our work better. So whether that's updating the zoning code or understanding what kind of connectivity people are missing, what kind of housing they're missing, what kind of services they're missing, how they're accessing those services, whether it's transportation, that just helps us with, with our work, do our job better because they are reaching, again, deeper into audiences and asking the deeper questions. Christina had kind of said before, the master plan's kind of at this 5,000-foot level. I think we're answering some of the questions. We get to some of the ideas about how transit can better serve people, how we're calming streets for people who don't have the transportation choices that a lot of us do, how we're trying to concentrate uses better into neighborhoods so that you don't have to go across town to get fresh food. So we're trying to, we've got some of the same goals. And then with their deep dive, they just help us with better information. It's the same with the Climate Action Plan. We identify a lot of really great ideas, again, from this 5,000-foot level in the master plan about incentivizing green gardens, incentivizing green development for buildings. But it's the Climate Action Plan that tells us, here's where your highest risks are and here's how you can impact in the greatest areas. And here are some metrics that you can take into account. So all of those plans work off of the strategic vision and off of the master plan to give us the better, deeper dive. And so that then when we need that next piece of information, we've got that team who can help us.
My question's right along the lines with David was talking about. And I wrote down a number of things, which I don't know if you would address these in the strategic plan or not, in the master plan. Mixed-income housing, is that going to be addressed? Desegregation, it seems to me that that should be a key piece in there. Affordable housing, what to do with empty lots and houses that are abandoned? Is that going to be in this too, or?
So again, we're setting up the foundation for those things to be addressed within, it's kind of the next pieces, whether it's through the consolidated plan with more affordable housing. So not having zoning that gets us to flexible models, to be able to develop, whether it's a four-flat of apartments or do a mixed-use building where you could have affordable housing above a commercial structure or even to simply infill a neighborhood with row houses or single-family houses at the moment in some places is a barrier. And so if we can work to loosen up the zoning to allow for these, this affordable housing to happen, because that, that works to the desegregation. We have many neighborhoods that only have one kind of type. If you don't want to live in a 120-year-old, single-family house, sorry. That's what you got. So it's, it's kind of, how do we allow that vacant land strategy to work better? It's not that someone doesn't want to develop there. It's just that the red tape is so arduous at the moment for some developers that it is a barrier.
So what I'm hearing you say is that you're removing the obstacles and that we're going to address this issues where?
So we're going to talk about it more in September when we talk about the, when we talk about economic development and the types of tools and incentives that then we can bring forward to get the affordable housing that we need.
It's also, should be, end up being an SPK, our action team. That's probably their responsibility under the family, family section and under the jobs section. So it's part of our work too, we've got to take on. What's interesting about this is it's like you've got these higher-level things that are preventing you from doing some of the individual things that we could do because we can't be as creative because our law ordinance is saying, you can't do that there. Well, should we be able to? Yes, we should. And let's change the law, which we get to do. And then let's figure out the how of going about doing that work.
And it's something that Christina said, like at the very outset of the presentation, was that the, the vision of the community has changed twice, but the ordinance has stayed the same. So it's, it's just, and we've already recognized that we've done several variants. We have so many variance cases every month, five to seven different variance cases, people coming forward. And the poor Zordinance Board of Appeals just going, when are we going to get this to meet the vision? You know, we're like, hang in there, hang in there. We're going, we're going as fast as we can. And so again, that's, we're, we're almost there.
And we'll always have variance. I mean, there's still going to be some, that they're going to come in for variances.
But when you hear.
But when we have this much, how often this is happening, maybe that means we need to make a change to say, okay, let's stop having that happen. Let's prevent the barriers from Sykes Development, who was working on low-income housing, to say, go forth and do compared to, oh my gosh, we've got all this stuff. And I got to pay somebody to be at a meeting and then we got to try to convince you and all that stuff. Shouldn't be that, that thing.
I have a question. It looks like it's pretty key that these, these Zordinances need to change before a lot of stuff could even be allowed, much less actually some developer come forward and say, I'm going to do it. So I guess my question to the city attorney and to the city manager is, is it proper for the commission to put some target dates in for having this, these ordinances in place? Because I could easily see it could get bogged down. And I think if we want to keep the momentum up from Imagine Kalamazoo, I think it would be great if we could move fast on that.
Commissioner, before you go on, some of that was gone over earlier. And so probably, and there's some.
We should probably get together.
There's some information you need in regards to how fast you can do that process when there's a lot of other work other than just saying, let's change everything. But they, let's have them share with you after this.
Yeah, I apologize.
That's okay.
No, it's all right.
We've got lots, we can fill you in.
Okay. So just a few other things here then. So how does this work interact with ongoing initiatives we have going? For example, you know, the, what seems like more of a use zoning that's going to be cooked into our marijuana business siting kind of ordinance? So how does that interact with a form-based zoning? Because we've been talking a lot about what seems to be use in that undertaking.
And keep in mind, so there's certain things we have to do per the state law. Now, we could have just said not do anything, but the attorney took it. So just keep that in mind. There are some things that don't fit necessarily the timeline we would have with a total zoning rewrite that we're obligated to either say nay or something.
And I, I think that, so form-based zoning doesn't ignore use. It just brings in form, maybe as the first thing that's handled and then it looks like use. When you look at streamlining uses in, whether it's form-based code or any code, you can streamline, you can streamline like uses that perhaps don't have, I'm going to call them negative kind of externalities, right? You know, uses that operate alike, you can cluster together. There are always going to be uses that require additional thought and perhaps additional parameters for their development, which are going to have to be called out separately. You know, we're not going to have a use table that simply says, commercial.
Industrial.
Industrial, residential, and that's it. I mean, there's good, it's not quite that.
A lovely bit.
You know, it's not quite, it's not that. But, you know, there's always going to be development that's going to require additional thought. And those will absolutely be handled as necessary. But, you know, we may not need to list candy store, toy store, you know?
Find different types of retail.
Water store, right. I mean, those are retail, right? They're all kind of of the same ilk. So that's what I'm talking about collapsing those type of uses.
So you talked a lot about neighborhoods. I think that's fantastic and interconnection. So when we're doing this, how do we handle the areas where the city, you know, abuts all the neighboring cities and townships and whatever they might have going on and how they're planning to move traffic and all that business? So how do we do that, not in isolation?
So we've, we're going through a 63-day comment period right now. We emailed and provided links to all of the surrounding townships and Portage, and they have all been giving us comments.
So they are bogged, they care about.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I've already received comments back from a couple.
I'm sorry, I'm just.
You're so long, go. I'll wait.
Does the, I'm being such a glutton for questions.
No, you're fine. I didn't leave that any kind of way, I promise. I'm very patient.
Does this redevelopment-ready community process specifically address zoning then?
No, they gave us technical assistance to help us. So they have several best practices that they kind of run through all cities. And so they take a look at your zoning ordinance and they, 2015, December of 2015, they paid for us to do what was called a Small Developers Bootcamp. And we chose Edison at that time. And we had a room of about 25 different developers. And they were all given different kinds of projects, residential projects, mixed-use projects, commercial projects. And they had to try and use our zoning to get the project done. They toured Edison, they picked out lots, and then they used our zoning ordinance. And the fun part of it was me sitting in front of the room with my yelp pad, scribbling down every barrier that they came up against. Because what they promised to do was, like in their, in their initial presentation, they said to everybody, do you want this kind of development? Do you want this kind of development? And we were like, yes, yes, we want this, you know, commercial with residential above. We want the single-family homes that look just like these. We want little garage maker spaces happening. We want all of this. And then they showed us how none of it was possible. So that was kind of the first look into that idea of the stress test of the zoning ordinance. And they said, okay, Rebecca, by the way, if we changed this setback, if we allowed these lot types, our average lot size is about 4,380 square feet when you kind of average Edison. But our zoning ordinance starts at 4,500. So we're starting with the barrier. So it's loosening those few things right off the top and just allowing what's there that can kind of, again, just take some of that red tape off. And especially when we're talking about affordable housing. We're already talking about someone who's going through an 18-month MISHDA process or, you know, trying to go through the LIHTC process or something like that, which is hard enough. The last thing, another barrier we want to put in front of them is, oh, now we need to wait two months because you need a rezoning and then you're going to go back to the ZBA for a variance. And then, you know, we don't, we don't want to do that. We at least want to get that out of their way so that we can help them with the pilot and we can help them with the LIHTC later.
So going back to affordable housing and mixed-income housing, you mentioned, I think I heard you say, you mentioned incentives. Are we incentivizing that development in all of our neighborhoods outside of just low-income neighborhoods? Do we have strategies for that?
There's no barrier to any of that. That's not zoned, that's not, yeah, there's no barrier.
Yeah, and I guess my question is not in terms of barriers, but, you know, whether or not we have ideas or strategies for incentives, incentivizing that development in other areas. Sort of along the lines of, you know, and I, you know, you met about this before with fair housing and whatnot.
Sure.
You know, how, how do we push some of that development? Do we thought about that in terms of this plan?
So with the master plan, again, it really is going to respond to the strategic vision in that way, how we look at deploying citywide incentives, whether that is a brownfield tax relief or can it be HUD dollars or what, what do we have kind of in that toolbox? We've been trying to open that up and think about an equity fund or a community land trust. How do we infuse those kinds of ideas with money? Because if you look up to our strategic vision, it says, no matter where you are in the city, the city itself feels very strongly about affordable housing. And so we need to look to that vision to be able to, when I come forward with a project and I say, I want incentives for this project because this, this developer is putting into this development X, Y, and Z. And look how that aligns with our strategic vision for affordable housing or workforce housing or what all of the pieces that we're trying to achieve for our strategic vision, what our community values as a whole. There have been brownfield incentives that have been given because you're taking that land, which was contaminated, and you've put new sustainable energy onto that land. You've, you've kind of like given it new life in a, in a sense or repaired in a way with a, now you've got a green roof and you're using solar energy and you've got green gardens. So how you deploy those incentives is really based on your strategic vision and where that vision is driving you. Because that's what tells us what we value the most. Does that make sense? Incentives are, incentives are what the community is telling us they should be.
I guess that does make sense. Thank you. I guess what I'm, what I'm. I guess what I'm, what I'm, what I'm trying to better understand or see is, you know, I, I hear some of those strategies, right? And those, and tell me if I'm wrong here. I could very well be wrong. You're the expert on this. It seems to me that most of that type of work and most of that development is going to happen in predominantly low-income areas, which is great, right? Redeveloping low-income areas is so important. I have a hard time seeing how those things apply to, say, you know, the Winchell neighborhood, right? And putting affordable housing in Winchell, if that makes sense. And I guess what, I guess the bigger question is really more in terms of displacement, right? So, we're talking about redevelopment. And you know me, you know, every time we talk about redevelopment, I want to understand how we're going to preempt any potential displacement. Because we know, once it shows up, it's too late. So, that's, that's sort of what I'm, I'm trying to get at. I, I had a chance to look at the best practices from the RRC certification that we've been talking about, and I just, I don't see it in there anywhere. And so, I don't know if I'm not reading thoroughly enough, but help me out.
No, it's two different, it's kind of two different things. I think that we are working with the community, community development portion of community development planning to really, to really think about review, incorporating, you know, how we, how we manage our redevelopment within our community to avoid displacement. How do we have conversations about it? What does it mean? And incorporating that language into this master plan. And so, we've been having conversations with them, especially as they go through their SBK process, do trainings, to make sure that we are incorporating it in a, you know, in a thoughtful way that starts a community conversation. Because we've talked about like a gentrification vulnerability analysis. So, as a baseline, I mean, you talk about Winchell. We need to think about Winchell in terms of what available land is in the Oakland-Winchell neighborhood. Where would we put a low-income development? That conversation is different when you have very built-out neighborhoods like Westonish Hill or like Winchell or even Oakwood. They're very built-out. It's harder to find pockets even within there. Edison, North Side and East Side are different, especially the North Side. There's a lot of available land in the North Side. And so, thinking through a gentrification vulnerability analysis for that neighborhood is pretty critical. Because what could be built on that land? And that gets back to the zoning code, too. What are we preserving? What are we changing? Where are these areas of transformation and where are these areas of preservation? And so, wanting to have that deeper, just neighborhood conversation about what your neighborhood wants for that area. Some of the gentrification vulnerability analysis that are being done, one that's being done in Atlanta is particularly good because they have two years of data right now. Portland has about five years, but they're so different that actually Atlanta's a little closer from the way that they're trying to look at it neighborhood by neighborhood. And so, they're first looking at age of homes, age of people who live in the homes, the value of the home, the income of the people who are living in the home, and then the development that's occurring in the area. And how is that changing? Is it changing property values? Is it changing other development types that might come into the area? Is it actually displacing people or is it raising everybody up? There's different ways to see how new development can come in and actually sustain a neighborhood that was going down. What the economic development team here did not too long ago, you may have heard Cal on Michigan radio talking about how the neighborhoods in Kalamazoo that are poorer and lower income are getting poorer and how the richer neighborhoods in Kalamazoo are getting richer. That there wasn't a balancing either way, that it was ones going up and ones going down and not other neighborhoods even being grown by that. And so, sometimes the bigger fear is more poverty and less development everywhere. And we're really hoping that part of our strategy can be, how do we empower those neighborhoods to grow for themselves? And that's with this whole idea about entrepreneurship, the development centers, the small developers boot camp, really putting money into the neighborhoods on a small scale, that there's no silver bullet is going to come in. Like, "Oh, we just need this one factory with all these jobs and we're saved," or something like that. You know, it's, it's more about putting several thousand dollars into 500 people's hands instead of several million dollars into one person's hands. How do you put that money in the hands of the person who can grow their own neighborhood?
Right.
Recently, there was an article in the newspaper about the redevelopment of the Bellevue Place area, which has been done largely by individuals and for nonprofits and with some kind of at an arm's length assistance from Western. Is that something you see as a, as a model or as an example of what you want? Or is it something that's going in a direction that's going to make your work harder?
No, never. It's great. It's awesome.
I, I never did say that.
That's incredible. No, we want to, and once again, that's us getting out of the community's way.
Yeah.
You know, we shouldn't have to handhold people through development. Our development should be so simple to read and so easy to understand that you should be able to do it yourself. You shouldn't have to call Rebecca and Christina every time you want to put a shut up because you're terrified of looking at the zoning ordinance. That makes me so sad.
Yeah.
You know, we want people to be able to do things because they're a community that came together and saw a product that needed to be done and didn't feel intimidated by just doing it and getting it done.
Well, what, I'm excited about what you're doing. And I could, I was trying to keep my enthusiasm up. I'm worried, though, a little bit about when it actually comes down to changing something in some neighborhood, a lot of folks can come out and say, "Well, all that stuff we said we were for, that's for down the street." I didn't mean for you to do it right here.
I didn't mean it.
So, I, I hope that whatever we do will be with the overarching idea, this is how we're going to build our whole community. It has to be a whole community effort across, across all neighborhoods. If we keep talking about just three neighborhoods, then some people are going to say, "Well, what's so special about them? What about my neighborhood?" You know? On the other hand, if it's citywide and we're going to go into Winchell Avenue and put it in a bunch of high-rise apartments and land that's already occupied, well, you're going to have some pushback. You, you have it about right, you know, I think, and the way you talk about it in YouTube, Christina, is just right. But I'm not sure, the public needs to hear you talk often, and you need to hear them often. So, even though Imagine Kalamazoo is done-
Oh.
You've got to finally, you've got to finally keep that rolling.
We think we just started.
Imagine Kalamazoo, where it's, might be in a slight pause while we are drafting this document, although not really because we're still going out to a lot of neighborhoods right now.
We are.
We have big citywide meeting on the twelfth.
We still have enough.
Yeah. We're not done. I think that, you know, we've, Imagine Kalamazoo goes on, and it's the process that we will use as we update the zoning ordinance. It's the process that we will use, you know, what, you know, for-
Complete street projects.
Yeah.
Yeah. Complete streets.
Climate action. Yeah. We're just like, you know, just not quite as many meetings this month because we're getting a lot of edits.
Yeah.
Yeah, something that just comes to mind from the discussion, and it's probably more of a discussion for the September meeting, but, you know, just, just sort of noting the, the structure of the plans, you know, we've got this sort of hierarchy of plans. And when I think about, you know, displacement and then also actively, you know, furthering fair housing, you know, it could be real easy to go, "Oh, that belongs in a lower plan." And then suddenly you get to those lower plans, and yeah, you're at the neighborhood level, and this neighborhood's like, "Well, that's not our plan." That's, you know. So, you know, perhaps more of a discussion for next month, but really making sure we're intentional on, you know, that citywide housing plan that says, "Well, yeah, things need to be in neighborhood plans, but we can't get to that level and go, 'Oh, well, only those three neighborhoods are, you know.'"
Well, that's why the, again, I'm going to reiterate that the strategic vision is critical because it is here and everything comes down from there. So, when your neighborhood plan comes in front of the planning commission to be adopted into the master plan, the planning commission is going to say, "Does this align with the strategic vision that the city has set forth that said, you know, shared prosperity, affordable housing, climate action, all of these things?" Otherwise, the planning commission is going to say, "I call you a fluff. I think you need to go back out." Because the planning commission will be sending that plan on to you, and then you will be able to review that neighborhood plan. Because again, they're going to be adopted into the master plan, and it will overtake that section. So, you will, you'll need to make sure that it is aligning with all of the values as our vision alignment states, all the way up to the strategic vision. And all of those directives under each one of those pieces should be thoughtfully considered. You can't just go do your own thing. The city, a citywide vision with that strategic vision and with this master plan.
Actually, I have a question, I think, for you. So, SBK has got for each of the issue areas committees. Is fair housing on the, on the housing committee, do you know?
There's not a housing committee yet. I think we're putting-
Or families, under families.
That's where that action area was.
Right. But do we, or are they created yet or maybe not created yet?
No.
Okay. I wonder if, I, I would, I would strongly advocate for maybe having fair housing on, on that committee, just because I know we've talked at length about, you know, some of the best practices nationwide to address displacement, to address some of the challenges you mentioned, like, how do you put affordable housing in an area like Winchell and West Winchell when we know we have to do that in order to really lift everybody up citywide as Commissioner Urban said? So, I guess I would just, I know they've got a lot of data on that from our previous administration, and I think that'd be helpful. Just my two cents there.
Okay, so, we also want to talk a little bit about, so, Imagine Kalamazoo and a little bit about how, how we move forward from here. We know that the master plan provides all city departments and all city staff with their work plan, you know, for the next, yeah, eight years or so. We also recognize that you, as the city commission, have decision-making authority, you know, over a wide variety of areas that deal, that, within the city. What we wanted to talk about before we end tonight was how also our volunteer, our citizen boards are going to use this master plan and use, you know, some of the goals that have come out of Imagine Kalamazoo. So, starting with the master plan, the master plan really resides with the planning commission. It's, you know, by the state, it's the body that manages it and implements it. So, every time a project comes forward for rezoning, for special use, you know, the planning commissioners are going to have this document, and we're going to do training with them, and they're going to say, "Oh, how does this meet the goals of the master plan?" Which, you know, again, will rise up to the strategic vision. And so, that, this will become their guiding document. Complete streets, complete streets requires for street projects to come before the planning commission. It's opportunity for the public to hear them, opportunity for the planning commission to, to understand what's going on. And again, you know, how are we meeting our goals that we set forth in the connected city vision statement? Climate action plan, Rebecca, you know, touched on this a little bit. We heard from Imagine Kalamazoo, the need to, you know, be more thoughtful with our environmental considerations of the city. We've started to draft a climate action plan with the help of Western Michigan University. As that plan is finalized, the environmental concerns committee that will be, you know, primarily housed for them is how we start to move forward, and they'll use that plan.
Before you go on, speaking of environmental concerns, who's our liaison, commission liaison to environmental concerns? So, some committees liaisons, I know Commissioner Anderson, you've been liaisons for a number of years to environmental concerns. And we're moving into this, to this climate action planning area, which is dear to your heart. We can have more than one commissioner that's a liaison to the community. Maybe we've got a couple of communities that have done that because of interests that you have. Somehow we've always locked ourselves, almost always locked ourselves, and it's got to be one person. But if there's something dear to your heart and you didn't get that, you can work together as commissioners to figure out how to work together.
Why not? I mean, really.
Right. There's no reason not to. So, go ahead, Christina.
The HUD consolidated plan, okay, I'm focusing on housing development, you know, is going to be near and dear to the heart of CDAC. Shared prosperity, you know, this is in process right now, what comes out of that plan, whether it's a new board or combination with existing boards to, to really run with shared prosperity issues remains to be seen, but there will always be some, you know, some citizen board that's involved with, you know, working to achieve the goals in each of the areas. Neighborhood plans, we've talked at length about them tonight. Planning commission again will review them to form incorporation as sub-area plans into the master plan. Again, as projects come forward, for their review, for a specific neighborhood, this would be a reference point for them. And the capital improvements plan, again, something that the planning commission reviews in the, you know, every winter as the projects go forward. Yes.
Well, shared prosperity right now doesn't have a specific subcommittee doing its work.
Right, not, it does not currently. I imagine that through the process, that would be one of the things they've discussed.
I have a suggestion about that.
Oh, great.
It, it seems to me that shared prosperity, the concepts of it pervade all of these other things. And so, to not let any of these other commissions off the hook, I would love to have the commissioners who go to these, these meetings convey that, the messages that we have concerning prosperity, shared prosperity that apply to that area, so that we're not creating another silo. It's just the shared prosperity silo. It really goes into, it needs to pervade all the other ones that are already here. So, I don't advocate creating a whole other structure just for that. I mean, it's just my-
We've also seen, you know, with the, with the consolidated plan, that is really strongly linked with shared prosperity since we do have that affordable housing piece in that. But I really appreciate your thoughts, Jack. So, some next steps. I've mentioned it earlier, I'm not sure everyone heard me. September 12th, we are having a citywide master plan presentation and reception at the Kalamazoo Institute of Arts. That meeting goes from 6:30 to 8:30 with presentations at 7:00. And, you know, outside of the presentations, we'll be setting up tables where residents can give input on different sections of the master plan. The master plan is going forth for a public hearing in front of the planning commission on October 5th at 7:00 PM. And then, you know, outside of specific master plan stuff, there's lots of other stuff in the works that relates to goals from Imagine Kalamazoo. So, zoning code, you know, starting a work plan and stress test, you know, we'll be looking at that in October. Complete streets, finalizing that policy in November. Shared prosperity plan is set to wrap up before the end of the year. You know, and we have, Imagine Kalamazoo has been stated many times as, you know, one of the founding, founding lenses for aspirational projects through the Foundation for Excellence. And, you know, that will be reflected, you know, in each budgeting year. And then the climate action plan, which you've already talked about, you know, in a draft form, you know, with assistance from Western Michigan University students, that will be taken forward and finalized by next spring. So, just because, you know, when the master plan, you know, goes to- So just because, you know, when the master plan, you know, there's two, it's two things. So the master plan, you know, hopefully, you know, finalized and approved in October and so, you know, work, Imagine Kalamazoo doesn't stop, work doesn't stop because then we need to implement all the goals and actions in the master plan and we have all the other work from Imagine Kalamazoo that, you know, wasn't housed in the master plan, but needs to be housed in these, you know, these other documents, whether it's housing issues or climate action plan, shared prosperity issues. So, you know, it keeps rolling up. And that is all I have. Oh, that's very well timed.
Christina, how soon after the planning commission has their public hearing will it come to the city commission, the master plan?
We're trying to be extremely optimistic that, you know, everything they say you're adopted, you know, no conditions, we could come to the next city commission meeting.
I think it's the 16th.
October the 16th. However, if the planning commission asks us to do any sort of amendments or changes or, then we would, we might be delayed until November or December.
I should also state that we are still in, we are in the public comment period that ran, it was running from August 1st to September 15th and the master plan is all over town. Libraries, city hall, offices, senior centers, coffee shops, you know, opportunities for folks to look at it, plus it's available online. Now, September 5th, you know, is kind of the cutoff for, September 15th is the cutoff for that comment period, but we have a whole public hearing on October 5th. So comments really aren't done, it's just an opportunity to kind of pre-comment and, you know, give us thoughts and ideas and we've had lots and lots of conversations related to the master plan since August 1st and that we've been able to incorporate edits already from those comments.
Because we'll be at the Hispanic Festival on, on September the 16th and we're also doing a couple more neighborhood boards after, like on September 20th and September 21st. So we're still kind of on the road taking in comments, but we, we have to like kind of make at least one benchmark because we have a deadline because we do have a lot of edits to go through, which we are compiling and trying to keep track of on a daily basis right now, which is good.
Another question. What's been the flavor of most of the comments? And part two is, are the comments, how, how often do you run into ones that are, conflict with one another? In terms of what's being requested?
Yeah, I think overall the comments have been very positive. I think there's been a lot of great questions, there's been a lot of thoughtful questions and comments.
Clarifications.
I think overall, I think there's been a lot of positive comment generated from the master plan. I'm not sure I have any comments received that are contradictory to each other.
I'd say one of the biggest things we may change, when we talk about the street designations, we've been using the term boulevard for kind of one of the biggest streets. We know that they period handle a lot of capacity, but a boulevard in a lot of people's minds is a tree-lined street. And so we may actually change that because the definition that we're actually trying to work from and the perception that's, that's in the world are a little contradictory. So that may be probably one of the biggest changes or significant changes that we make is the, the term boulevard.
And we've received a lot of great comments, very thoughtful. Again, the process doesn't end, you know, just because we don't have neighborhood meetings every week or, you know, on master plan topics, where folks are still thinking about it and coming back to us with, with ideas.
Yeah. Describing the neighborhood planning process probably is one of the other things that we really need to get into detail, that the neighborhood plan would be adopted into the master plan and supersede what's there, like that isn't as clear as we'd like it to be. So that's something that we've been answering a lot of questions about.
So the one thing, I, I want to go, I'm a skeptic going these two-way streets. I think they're wonderful ideas, but when, when you look at the cost and when you look at the needs of the city, I'm very skeptical. And I remember the last time this came up, at least the people on Level Street were very, very much against that, so.
I think their perception too is that they were going to lose a lot of parking and I, and I think that the way that we're looking at those designs now is that we do not need a continuous left turn lane down that street to make it successful and which would not remove parking in that way. So I think that we're just looking at things a little bit differently. I think that there are different, what we like to call trade-offs. So sometimes we have to say, would a little more backup, let's say two or three cars on the street be worth having two-way traffic and a better connectivity to, back to the university? So are, what are we willing to trade off? Connectivity to the university for 15 minutes of backup? Or we say, you know, that the other 23 hours and 45 minutes of the day don't matter, but that only that 15 minutes does? So thinking about level of service in a different way.
The challenge is you can't ignore that people raise this as a significant issue through visioning. If we're going to respect the visioning process, we need to explore this, knowing that if you think about all this work that we've been doing with all of these things, you know, whether it's Complete Streets, we approve a Complete Streets plan, six people show up and, and we're dancing, squirming on the dais because, well, that's different than what I said. Well, we either believe in what we believe in as a city or we don't. And, and sometimes you've got to find it within yourselves to stand at that moment and move things. But people know that they can push your buttons, our buttons, in different ways.
I think something else that's gone on with the Imagine Kalamazoo process and other studies that have gone on related to that is not only did we hear from many residents that it was of interest, you know, to improve navigation within town, you know, there's been several studies surrounding the downtown in the last five years, both looking at housing and retail, that have illustrated the significant impact of having one-way streets versus two-way streets, particularly in the downtown and what that does to potential retail sales numbers, what it can do to attracting new businesses, what it can do to attracting residents, new residents into areas. So, yeah, just additional information in the mix.
Mr. Manager, do you have anything else?
Nothing, your honor.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Thank you.
We're now at Citizens, oh, we're now at Citizens Comments. Anyone wanting to address the commission, please step forward. You have four minutes, give us your name and whether you live within the city.
Do you want me to stand up?
You can stand up from there, you can talk from there, sure.
You said you need our name, my name and address? My name is Maddy Jory Woods, I live at 902 West Patterson and it's concerning the Imagine Kalamazoo. And the original document in Imagine Kalamazoo, when it started talking about neighborhood plans, it actually listed the Edison Neighborhood Plan and that's in the document. Well, the North Side had a plan, East Side had a plan, and I want to know, are, are those plans going to be in the master plan or are you going to say, oh, no, well, no, we're waiting and we are asking all these other people to make the North Side plan, but yet it was automatically put in the Edison Plan? And all of us got the same funds for list that did planning and went in and have had several resident-driven planning sessions that pretty much said the same thing. So I guess that would be my question.
Thank you. Thanks, please.
I'm Zachary Laster, I live in the city. Couple things, I ride a bicycle first off, so I'm going to knock bicycle lanes a little bit here. There's significant data when it comes to bicycle lanes specifically, but non-motorized transit and gentrification. And there's significant correlation, there's actually been significant research showing that non-motorized transit is actually a cause of, part of a cause of gentrification and actual, and you look it up, there's significant research showing it. I know that some bike advocates have paid for research to show something else, but I'm sure McDonald's can pay for research saying that if you eat at Big Macs, it will sway. But I think it really needs to be addressed, the gentrification and housing crunch in Kalamazoo because I hate to say it, but it's already started. If you look at the cost of lower level rents that are not subsidizing Kalamazoo, in the past 10 years, they have significantly gone up. You've gone, went from where you could have, you could get a studio apartment for $400 now easily 10 years ago to having trouble finding that for 600. And there are people that, you know, are on disability and frankly earn $600 a month. So they've got to find a way to pay their rent and feed their face and do things with their life and they're being forced out of communities already and it's happening here in Kalamazoo already. So I don't think, I think if we're going to be developing a plan that starts implementing non-motorized transit, we need to start implementing as part of that a planned deal of housing. I know a way that Detroit's done with this is any project that get, any project that has residential aspect to it, that gets any sort of city funding or any sort of funding that's approved by the city, it's required that a certain percent of those units be below a certain amount of income and the rent be not above a certain amount. I'm not sure the particular is that, I know there's other cities in the state that do that as well. We really need to look at something because, yeah, I know developers say that it doesn't add up to their numbers for lower income housing for their projects, but if they're not, if they're getting city money, we need to say maybe that doesn't add up to our numbers and we need to realize that the constituents are people that live in Kalamazoo and not developers. Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to address the commission? Saying no one, we're at Commissioners' Call. I'm going to ask the planner in regards to the neighborhood plans. So to me, this is, for me, the question is, are there neighborhood plans in the plan or not? So if there are not, then there should be no ones mentioned. If there is one, then if there's other plans, then they should be mentioned.
In the 2010 plan, it listed all of the neighborhood plans that were in existence at that time. We have not listed any of the existing plans in the new plan yet.
So the plan that's out, we're talking about the master plan, the plan that's out in the community for the comment time, there's no neighborhoods mentioned in the plan. I mean, no neighborhood plans.
Existing neighborhood plans, no. But in the 2010 plan, which is the plan we're all working from at this moment, does mention some existing neighborhood plans within it, like the Edison Plan.
But not 2017.
Correct. So any plans done after 2010, when that plan was published, would not be part of any current master plan.
Commissioner's like?
Yeah, um, sorry, I'm, I was processing that, that answer too and I had some things that I wanted to say and I got caught in the middle, so sorry. I, I was wondering if I could ask you, City Manager, what are, do we have a, a schedule of work session topics coming up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. We've got one in September that was mentioned. Actually, October, I'm going to be at the International City Managers Conference, so we took that meeting off, that work session. And then November, we pick up again in November, budget, budget on November and December and then in January, I think we pick up on some other topics.
What's the topic for the next one, for me?
The housing, affordable housing.
Economic development.
Economic development.
Okay, so my comments tonight are just going to be, I'd like to put sort of in the queue, if you will. I'd love for us to have a, a work session and discuss policing, specifically in terms of the group violence reduction initiative and how the letters play into that. I'm a little bit confused about that. And also bringing back up, I know I'm going to be a broken record after a while, but the broken windows policy, the studies on that and whether or not that, that leads itself to racial profiling. And, and also going back to that independent study, I know, you know, at least in my line of work, often what we'll do is pre and post evaluation, we talked about that a little bit with SBK too, you know, when you have the pre, that way you can measure your performance, how well you've done. So I'd love to, you know, discuss during that work session, a post-study and when and how that happens. And then also if we could add the citizens review board as a topic under that sort of policing umbrella to talk about, you know, if there's room for more citizen, citizen-led oversight, what that looks like, how we get there. Especially in terms of this conversation as we explore redevelopment and gentrification, I, I know that policing and forms of policing actually play into that and whether or not redevelopment really leads to extreme displacement. So if we could stick that on the queue and maybe give Chief a heads up so that he can sort of prepare that information, that would be awesome. And those are my comments for tonight.
Other comments, Commissioner Urban?
Well, thank you very much for, for making this a topic for this, this month. I'm really embarrassed about being late because I was had on my calendar for knowing that this is coming. I, my excuses. Well, anyway, let's get on. I wanted to say something about gentrification. It seems like we're using that term very loosely now. Gentrification, as I understand it, is not just simply a general trend in rising prices for housing or for rent. It has a very specific, narrow meaning having to do with a very high demand for property in, in redevelopable areas. It displaces people in a specific, pretty well-defined locale. But in Kalamazoo, in the last five years since the Great Recession, housing prices have rebounded all around. So that's, that's not gentrification in my opinion, that's just the secular trend in, in, in prices for rents. Another thing that I've heard is contributing to what some people call general gentrification is the promise. Promise is, the promise is increase the demand for housing in Kalamazoo. And this gentleman told me that he felt that that was causing gentrification, simply having an increased demand for housing. Well, we want an increased demand for housing. And that's how, that's how the value goes up. I mean, looking at it from the other point of view, there's really always two points of view, at least two points of view on topics like this. And it's very important that we not polarize ourselves when we talk about that. So I would, I would hope that when, when we talk amongst ourselves and when people talk to us, that we would be pretty specific about what we mean when we use the term gentrification.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other call? Mr. Manager, it's my understanding we don't do broken windows anymore, is that correct?
That's correct.
Let's check in.
All right.
So one of the things I wanted to ask, a couple of quick questions or a couple of opportunities for a kitchen cabinet idea, might be to have those Bellevue folks that did that amazing stuff to be a part of some kind of communication group or somebody you're connecting with to help other, other places that might want to try something and learn from, from them, that might be interesting. And then I had a question in regards to the assessor and tax challenges. So I'm wondering, are we seeing a lot of folks challenging their taxes through the review board? And you don't have to answer that today, but it would be interesting to get some information about what's going on with all the review board activity, maybe an update on that. And then, Mr. Manager, I'm going to continue to harp on service delivery as we're working on all this work, whether it's these plans or all these things we're trying to roll out, how are we delivering service at our, at each of the windows? I've used the example of the window downstairs. It's weird to me that we have two windows up front, but sometimes one window's up front staffed and the one, other one around the corner, why aren't we staffing the two in the front? And then those other ones become secondary. These little service tweaks that I want to make sure we're looking at. And I had a question posed to me today on Twitter about Portage Street and the Portage Street reconduct, construction. I tweeted that we're doing a whole bunch of work on Portage Street and a lot of it deals with lead services. deals with lead services removal, and that the street's going to be redone. Someone asked me about sidewalks. I didn't know what to tell them. I know that we're improving the ADA crossings, or the crossings, but they were just asking me generally about sidewalk improvements. I don't necessarily know, I didn't have the answers, so if someone could give me that answer, that would be helpful. We're now at item F, a request for closed session to discuss labor negotiations and litigation matters. The request motion is to go into closed session, is there a motion? Supported by Commissioner Millsaric, supported by Commissioner Knott, in discussion. Clerk Moss, please call the roll.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Commissioner Millsaric?
Yes.
Commissioner Sykes?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney?
Yes.
Mayor Hopwa?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes. Thank you, motion carried, will not be retried for action until this meeting is adjourned.